... meeting. Statement of compliance, the Open Meetings Act is posted on the back wall. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Alarcon, Barr, Freshour.
Present.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Counsel, President Jablonsky, the roll has been called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you for everybody being here. We have one item of discussion or presentation. Hope, would you want to do the introductions?
Sure.
Thank you.
Corinne Donahue will be presenting information to us. I've been a part of kind of a collaborative meeting in regards to workforce transit, coming from voices within the community and what that might look like with expansion within the county and also over to Colfax County. But Corinne has updated information in regards to feasibility study of what that looks like for our region.
Thank you, Counsel. Go ahead now. Oh, okay. I am Corinne Donahue, and I'm with the Nebraska Department of Transportation Mobility Management Team. I do work for Olson, but we are the project management company that's working with NDOT. As Hope just mentioned, we did present to you about six months ago, so I'm a fresh new face after six months. Thanks for having us back, and we're getting to the end of the study, so just we need to keep you all in the loop. We've talked to the community, we've talked to many businesses, we've talked to many stakeholders, and you represent many of those, so making sure we're keeping everyone in the loop. Go ahead, next slide, please. It's just a quick presentation today, a little bit of the study, just a flashback since it's been a couple of months, and then also talk to you about the options that we heard and were developed based on what we heard from the community, and then what are the next steps for implementation. This slide will not be foreign to you. You guys know your growth in this area. It's been great. It's good that you have a small, steady growth, which many rural Nebraska, South Dakota, Kansas counties do not, and cities do not, so it's really encouraging when you see the growth in Columbus and know that that's not, if you look at the projections, that's not in a downward slope. Your transportation needs will continue to follow that that growth pattern as we as we move into the future. But why we're talking about it today is because you also have decreasing transit ridership. Much of that has contributed to COVID. We're still on the flashback to COVID. You can imagine it was two years ago, but when COVID shut many businesses down, transit also took a hit. People didn't want to travel, they couldn't travel, and you certainly didn't want to be sitting right next to someone on a vehicle. So that trend will eventually come back, but right now, we have a task force that was developed over two years ago from your community that said, we have a lot of transit needs here, and so we need to make sure we do something about it. So that's how the study started. The final bullets were, when we talked to you guys six months ago, you know, where do you guys want to be in 10 years and five years with public transportation? Do we want more? Do we like what we have today? And you all in this community need to need to decide what that looks like. The task that we have, when we were here last time, we were in the middle of two and three, and we're getting ready to solve this study and and move on and try to make it happen, and so we are on task four, moving into a draft and final plan. You can have the best plan in the world, but if our community doesn't know about it, then we're in trouble. So that's why, again, we'll, we are happy to be here today, and then we'll come back as many times as we need to. Next slide, please. So you guys may remember, and I'll say thank you if you did fill out the community survey last summer, that was a pretty critical part, that we had very diverse responses. We had almost 1,000 responses from community members. I hope you guys were one of those in here in the room if you took that survey. Thank you for doing that. We pulled just a couple of different questions to focus on. This one, do you or someone you know have a challenge with finding transportation? So that might be to a hospital, to work, to school, to whatever. And the main piece of this is wherever and whomever answered that question, over half of our community does have a challenge when they need to get transportation. And again, like I said, that could be a doctor's appointment, it might be groceries, it might be your neighbor just trying to visit someone. But when you have over half of your community responding that, you know, you also are like, okay, you know, this is something that at least I need to know about for sure. Next slide, please. One of the other questions is, okay, well, we know you have a challenge, what is that challenge? And this question focused on, are you aware of any unmet public transportation needs within the county, which of course includes Columbus? We've pulled out the major themes of this. There are seven listed, limited access to vehicles for just personal transportation, so they might have one and a half vehicle, they might have one, they might have a half vehicle, you know, there's just limited options to be able to go somewhere. Weekend transportation, our service today operates Monday through Friday, so it wasn't a little bit, you know, it didn't surprise us too much that weekend would be on this list. Limited access to the college, people are wanting to get education, they can do better for themselves, it's an impact on our community. Transportation to Columbus for people outside, not a shocker, you guys have a major activity center in Columbus, people need to come here for work, for groceries, for life, many different reasons, for hospitals, for medical visits. Limited options, again, outside the city for kids, family, elderly, work, school, medical, and employment. So when we took the 900 responses and tried to whittle that down, exactly what do they mean as an unmet need, those were the main responses coming out. Limited wheelchair accessible vehicles, so we do have a disability population that did come forward in the responses that we received. And then just lack of knowledge, like, what do we really do out there today? And so just knowing that people are trying to understand of our of our services, what do we operate? Thank you, great segue on this next one. We do have the CAT service here in town. It operates Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. within the city limits. We provide almost 6,000 trips a year, which is great. There's a small staff, a manager, administration, the dispatch, and then the drivers, and then four vehicles for the service. So there is a good service here in town. This city has supported public transportation for almost 50 years, if not over 50 years, but for a very long time, and thank you for doing that, because the 6,000 people that ride this, ride this service wouldn't be able to be mobile without, you know, without the service out there. Next slide, please. So we took all those 900 responses, and we took our task force, and we said, okay, guys, what what does this all mean? We developed about seven different alternatives, which are shown in front of you, and took this back to the task force. And then our job basically is to put a dollar amount, so, hey, we do want to do this, but how much is it really going to cost us? And this is also a service that is assuming that we're going to go after federal and state transit dollars. We are eligible if we have the service open to the general public for 75% of operating funds to be reimbursed, and then for capital expenditures, 90% is being reimbursed. But we do have to have it open to the general public. So those options that are listed on the left side of the chart assume that this is open to the general public. The task force took a look at these last fall, and if you could go down to the next slide, and said, wow, that's a lot. If we had to break this in, what's our tier one, or priority one, two, and three? The green circled services for outside city limits, employer transportation, and school transportation were the top three for the for the task force, and that's what they agreed to move forward with. Next slide, please. So then we took tier one, and within tier one, we had the three services. They said, okay, let's start with one of these, let's see where we can go. And we took employer transportation the first for the first step of the of these services. Then we developed an employer survey that was sent out to them to, I think, 300 or 400 different employees, employers in the city and in the county, and we did get 60 responses. 20 of those 60 were major employers, which is a great, you know, that's that's what we wanted to see, where we're having the, you know, the most movement of people for getting to jobs. With those surveys, then we pulled these options that are right here. There were two, there, you can kind of see their pink, blue circle, and then a green line that goes east-west. Route A is the pink one that actually goes north and west to Lindsay Corporation. It actually visits the town of Lindsay, but that was one of the main responses that we needed service outside to Lindsay. Then you'll also see a green line that goes to Skylar. There are several major manufacturers and businesses that travel east-west on that corridor, so this main route would serve serve that location. And then the blue circle within, if you look at the blown-up map in the top right-hand corner, you can see the red dots where we had responses from several of the major employers here within the city, that they're needing transportation, they're needing employees to get to work, and as we said, our transit opens at 8:00. Well, if you work at 8:00, you know, our public transit doesn't work well for you. If your shift starts at 6:00 a.m., that doesn't work for you. So again, our option C on this is that within the city and this periphery, we would have early morning service, and we would have afternoon service into the evening to serve those markets that are not served today. So today, this is kind of the summary slide, just for you all to to see the full costs. Again, we were focusing on what our task force agreed to, what they supported. This was from the community survey, and, you know, again, assuming that this is going to be partially funded by federal and state dollars, because it'll be open to the general public for anyone that would want to use their service. So Route A and B, the full cost of that service for operations is right at $364,000 per year. $91,000 would be the local match for that $300,000 because of the reimbursed dollars. We don't have extra vehicles in Columbus today, so we would have to get vehicles to run that service. If you add those vehicles, the total local match would be $119,000. So that's for Line A, and then the Columbus expanded service, that was the blue circle, that service is more expensive because you have more operating hours. The full cost for that service was 700 and over 725,000. The local match on that is 182, and then we would need to have vehicles for that particular one. Sorry, if you could slide up, you're way faster, I'm moving fast and I talk fast. So what what we then talked about at the task force last month is, okay, if we're going to make this happen, we need to go out to our cities, to our counties, to our employers, and underfunding partners, and see if they're willing to step forward to fund this service so we can provide expanded service. So we have visited Colfax County and also Platte County. We did have a commitment from verbal commitment from Platte County to support Route A and B, pending the partnerships from the other agencies stepping forward. But they were encouraged to have service outside the city of Columbus for rural areas, and encouraged to get people to work. That's a ripple effect in our community, so that is what we heard from from them. And so for today, asking consideration if city council would support additional funding for expanded services, and as the task force said, their priority was for this employment transportation to be the first phase. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Of your 900 responses, could you tell who where they were from?
We could. There there was a zip code, and actually, they could fill out their full address. I can get you that information. I'm sorry, I don't know it off the top of my head, but happy to share that with you for sure.
Okay, thank you. I was somewhat surprised in these 900 surveys that 100% didn't didn't show up as knowing someone that had transportation difficulties. Can you compare this 50% to other surveys that you've done?
I can, and I'll try to keep it in rural areas, because even though you guys are one of the major activity centers in this area, we're still rural, and so one of our challenges is if you have very limited transportation, you know, I have an aunt that is in a wheelchair, and she can get around absolutely fine between 8:00 and 4:00. If she wants to get to church on Sunday, she's on her own. And so those are the ones that we do see. In rural areas, typically, actually, we see that a little bit higher. I'd say more like a 65% of knowing someone that does need transportation service or has a challenge.
Like I say, I'm quite surprised that it's not 100%. I look around, and maybe it's our age demographics here, but I would suggest that 100% of our board here knows someone that has transportation difficulties. I'm just surprised that the number is that low. Thank you.
Counsel, I was just going to address that, and if you would have polled the 30 active agencies that sit on your transportation task force from 2022, it would have been 100% too. But it was very important for them to do a survey community-wide, because if they come to you, you guys are going to say, who'd you talk to? And they will want to know that this was taken out to the full community. Yeah, great observation.
Obviously, reimbursement means we upfront the money. Tarek, is that something that we could use 840 money for?
So I don't know that I'm the best person to explain this, but so far, conversations have not led to that CAT would expand services and provide these services.
But I mean, if we get to that discussion, would, is that something we could use 840 money to?
We, economic, local economic development funds would not fund a transportation services. It doesn't, it's not a business, unless a business applied for it.
Doing the transit.
For their portion.
Okay.
Yeah, and that might be, would have to really dig into that.
So if somebody was interested in doing the the busing, we would be able to help.
We could potentially look at 840 funds. Really, the only thing that businesses can apply for that's not infrastructure, property buildings, is training and development, so I'm not sure how our city attorney would categorize transportation. So we'd have to.
Because we're going to have to find that money somewhere.
I don't know, I don't think it's definitely, it's not just up to the city, in my opinion, or the stakeholders' opinion.
That was, that was my question. I was wondering if the businesses can, or have there been any interest from the businesses to maybe contribute to this?
Well, they're next on the list.
Okay.
And visiting individual. Sometimes they like to come in groups, but we usually have a better effect that just of understanding this whole piece. We did hear from 20 of the large employers, and they were interested in transit service. So does that mean a dollar amount? Are they just interested? Those will be next conversations. But one of the pieces that, you know, I'm lucky enough to work across the state of Nebraska, that when we're able to say the counties and cities have skin in the game, and they've done this, now we're coming to you and we need help. That says a lot versus like, oh, we're looking at you and you need to support this whole thing. So it was good that Platte County this morning did step forward, because that'll that'll make a difference in the conversations that'll be coming in the future.
Well, I think one of the things that we could look at is, you know, where are those other partners in the game? Because, you know, there's so many of these things we talk about that are going to have, you know, common ownership by many, and when it all shakes out, there's one or two left standing. And I think we've got to reassure ourselves and our citizens that we don't become the one or two left standing. I mean, this would have to be something that is, you know, together with, and, you know, the businesses are going to have to, the industries are going to have to take a take a stand and become an integral part of this. And I think I remember sitting in the the original discussion where you were at, and, you know, one of the one of the line items that's huge is is school transportation. And I guess I would, you know, we're not addressing that yet, right, in in your discussion, but I think that's one of the bigger ones in in our community. And why are we not addressing that, you know? And why aren't we aren't, why are we not looking for that partnership from that entity to come forward? I mean, yeah, I, all of this sounds good, like so many things, but if it's a combination of many partners. of many partners, we need many partners. And the other thing is we've got to find a way to make something sustainable so that it's not the city, you know, giving this year because then others are going to take it on. A lot of times all of a sudden, we're just going to do this one year or two years and then it's a budget item forever. Is that what we want? Is that what we can handle? I'm not saying it isn't or it shouldn't. I just, we have to look at it and, and see where does it fit? Timing wise is perfect. We're getting in the middle of budget discussions. If this is a point of discussion that the council wants to move forward with, we're going to have, you know, those opportunities to talk about it in the next couple of months. So I mean, that part is really, really good from a timing standpoint.
And Mayor, just to build off your comment, the school transportation was within the tier one from the task force group. Maybe if you wanted to go up just a little bit, uh, for maybe like three slides in the tier one. One more, uh, yep, right here. The school transportation was recognized from the task force. Now, if we do the, the two options, and I'll have you go back down to your slides. Sorry to go. If you do the, the A and the B and the C, those expanded morning and afternoon hours would be an opportunity to serve some of the school kids. General public transit is first come, first served. So if you're on the list to get there, that, those expanded hours would certainly help with that, with that transit need.
Which you're looking at more, more vehicle and more people because it's all the same timeframe.
Correct. And those are built into these costs.
And I think originally when we started at it, it was, we eventually got it down just to rural and we weren't, because we needed to start someplace. And so rural was the thing that we really tried to accomplish, the designated route to get people to work and what have you. Also, we talked about the last meeting of having another company come in and, and bid this process too. And there are people out there that actually do this kind of work. So that's, that's something else that can be promoted.
They'll be very interested in these charts.
I was a little disappointed in the lack of facts and figures. For example, how many people in Lindsay are coming into Columbus? And of those, how many need transportation, have transportation needs? How many people in Columbus traveled to Lindsay? And of those, how many have transportation issues? Likewise, the same for Skyler. How many people are coming in from Skyler? How many people are going to Skyler? It would have given me a much better perspective of the issue, of the problem, uh, to see, we've got 700 people that are going back and forth between here and Lindsay. And of those 700 people, 350 have transportation issues. As it is, I have no idea what the scope of the problem is. Another question I have is local match for funds. Do fares, fares fall into that local match category? And comparatively speaking, how much of that local match would come from fares?
Two great questions. I should have put the information for the travel patterns. We do have that information. The committee had requested that early on, the demographics. The data that we have is census data. That's the most reliable data that's out there. And they do travel pattern data of in and out of your community or your county. You can look at those. We do have that information and would be happy to share that, you know, with council if you're interested. What it doesn't say, um, do you have a vehicle available? It is specifically for work trips only too. So if you're traveling back and forth and you went to a medical appointment, you would not be in that census count. So we are as good as our data, but we do have that travel information available at the task force level. It was just earlier on in the study and I didn't, if we only had 10 minutes today, I just went straight to the, to the question. Your second point about the fares, fares are not counted in the local match. So if we collected $10,000 in fares, you have to, actually have to take that off of your operating costs and it would not count towards that local match.
What, what would you consider a reasonable fare in, in this overall perspective? We've got $900,000 here. Are we talking $10,000 worth of fares? Are we talking $100,000 of fares or something different?
Usually it's about 10% of your operating costs. So if you have a $300,000 budget, there's 10% for your fares. I'll give you an example. There is a commuter line for employer transportation that runs from Norfolk to Wayne for Great Dane Manufacturing today. It's been in operation about two years. With that particular service, Great Dane is just supporting the transit agency as a check. They wanted their employees to have it for free. So every Great Dane employee, if they have a valid ID, they show that to board the bus. Now, Great Dane internally, as the company has talked about whether their HR wants to approach the, you know, the whole group of employee, employees to say, will we pull $3 out of your paycheck every two weeks to help us have that as a sustainable transportation service? So that will be a question as we get further down the road. You know, as an incentive to employers, turnover is costly. And if you can have reliable transportation of getting people to first or second shift, that makes a big difference, you know, to major employers. So we'll be very interested as those conversations move forward with a, you know, with those employers.
And by having the transportation?
Yeah, um, thank you, Councilman. So many of you may know that in 2022, Norfolk Area Transit had a transit manager that embezzled $750,000. The agency actually ended up suspending service for three months. That meant the service to Tyson, the service to Lindsay and the service to Great Dane stopped for three months. So when the service, they were able to, you know, raise the funding. It was, you know, semi a miracle in a month to do all that craziness. But, um, Great Dane is the first one at the door. When they opened doors again in April of 2023, they said, we need this service right now. You can't imagine the hit that we took on our service industry from that service. Now, they are the only ones that have come back to Norfolk Area Transit for that. Tyson actually ended up doing a Plan B. I think they hired their own private company to do that. And then Lindsay Manufacturing has had a little bit of a changeover in staff and I'm not quite sure where, you know, where they are. But Great Dane was the first one back at the door and signed up to help the agency. So they have a shift that starts at 4:00 AM. You know, driver leaves about 2:30 in the morning to make sure they get there on time. And, and that's how that one works today.
And it also helped them with their employment.
Absolutely.
I mean, they were, they were looking, they needed employees. And when they started this transportation program, they did not have any problem after that with, with employees. They had, they had a full, full commitment of employers, employees.
It's a similar distance, about 30 minutes from, you know, from Norfolk to that. A little bit, you know, ours is more 20 to 25 to Skyler and to Lindsay here. But, um, your car breaks down halfway. Are you walking to work or are you walking home? You know, those kind of just reliability of transportation and shift coverage was pretty critical to them.
One of the issues that we're seeing here is 20, uh, operations cost. 25% local match, 75% federal and state. How assured are we of that 75% match on a continuing basis?
That is a pretty stable number. We will have a new administration, as you guys know, in November. But in 50 years that you have been operating service here in Columbus, that number has not gone away. So I'm pretty confident that will be fine. Obviously, I'm not in Washington DC, but I, I will go at least off the past 50 years.
You're lucky.
Well, I'm 55, so I said five years. I didn't get it when I was five, but.
I mean, not being in Washington DC.
Oh, yes, yes, agree. Any other questions? So if it's okay with you, we would like to come back and present a little bit of the findings after we've talked to the other elected boards and then to the employers to give you hopefully a, a positive that everybody is on board. Several of you said, what happens if they're not? You know, a study can sit on the shelf. I think your task force is an active task force. I think they'll be back. They've, they've known about transportation as one of the barriers for multiple programs in the city for a long time. And they, um, I'm, I'm so proud to say this group in Columbus has not, you know, disappeared. They've stuck with it. They know that transportation is one of the barriers and they're, you know, they're dedicated to it. So, yeah, thank you.
So just as, as a summary, the, the amount that if you would come back and there's a whole bunch of industry involved, what, what is it you're looking for from the, the city? Do you have a number or are you going to wait and see?
We always have a number.
I mean, because, because again, if we're going to have some discussions, even though we're not going to make any decisions, it'd be nice to have some parameters to discuss.
That's where, that's where we come back the next time is what.
Is that, is that right?
We have initial numbers.
We do have initial numbers. On, if you could go back up one more slide. So at the last, or sorry, one more. On the last meeting, we presented initial numbers that these are your ballpark numbers to get the service started. So a local match of 329,000, if you divide that by four, Colfax County, Platte County, City of Columbus and, um, the local agencies, that is about $82,250 annually. So we would at a minimum say, council, would you consider writing a letter of support for 82,250 each year for three years? And we, we would prefer to have this as a bit of a pilot project to say, you know, after three years, you know if you've done it or not. If there's nobody on that bus, we don't want it running. You know, you know, you have to advertise, you got to get everybody on board and you got to change behaviors of people for that. So the initial ask, Mayor, to answer your question is 82250, which is an equal, uh, portion of that total local match for those two lines above that in the table. If we support one versus the other, that's okay too. You know, there's not a wrong answer. It's that would be able to start services for all of those, for those A, B, and C routes that we talked about.
And this would be a different program than our program. And our program would continue, or we don't know that, or are we?
We don't know that.
It could be, it could not be. It's you all would decide if you want that in-house growth or if you'd like to see it, a partner come in to do that.
So that's a soft part of the conversation as this thing starts to gel, come together.
Correct. If there's no money, the conversation is done. If there is money, then we move to that next step. There's a nonprofit, um, Community Concern of Norfolk that started their service in 1972, I think. And so they are the ones that run it. And then the council is a contributor to the local match funding.
Okay, any other questions? You gave a nice report. We'll look forward to your next step. And with that, I think our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.